So Michael, I think we're able to start going around and we'll do introductions. Far away with the questions, I think we've got until about ten fifteen. Um, so we'll go from there. So Tom Rick Rogers, mayor, lived in Newburgh now for twenty-three years. Uh, all three kids went to Newburgh High School and all that, um, and been mayor for three years and four months. Jefferson?
I'm Jefferson Oldberg, uh, also lived in Newburgh pretty much all my life.
My pride, I've lived here all my life, sixty-seven years. So, um, I have a farmer's insurance agency for forty years. And, uh, just came onto the council in January.
Then why again? And I am not part of the council. I'm, um, one of the business people that are interviewing and helping out. Um, I own, uh, events center just down the road, been in Newburgh about twenty-one years.
Hi, my name is Steve Bacon. I've been on the council for fourteen years. Something, um, I've lived in Newburgh for twenty-four years. I work in Foyampe, so the Republican Foundation or those were, um.
Well, you see, I don't know, and, um, been on council since two thousand and eighteen. Lived in Newburgh since two thousand and sixteen. I grew up in the Beaverton area and I work at Providence.
I'm Stephanie Finley. I've been on the council for over three years. Uh, my family has lived here for about nine years and I'm a stay-at-home mom and a part-time social worker at the homeless shelter.
All right, there we go. All right. I didn't mention that my dad worked for half an every man.
Oh, okay.
Um, all right. So now if you could just introduce yourself, give us a brief introduction and then we'll follow up with the first question, which is describe your leadership style and how you have developed that.
All right. So I have been in public service for over a decade now. I started, uh, two thousand and seven or so. I started working for the North Coast Regional ESD in Hillsborough as an accountant. Uh, spent two years there and right at the two thousand and nine time was when that one of the previous recessions started and it was not a good time to be in school. So then we were told that that because of a ordeal at Salem U S D, um, that ESDs in general were typically on the potential cutting board. And so, uh, a lot of us chose to kind of at least put some leaders out there to see what's available. And that's how I started working at the city of Hubbard as their senior accountant, financial director there. Uh, spent a couple of years there. I actually lived in Cornelius at the time, so it was quite a drive, um, sometimes an hour and a half back and forth. Um, through some context there and through, started to go into conferences for the Oregon Government Finance Officer Service Association. I got connected with more people, found a, uh, uh, finance director at Forest Grove that, uh, we got along great. The position opened up and I went ahead and applied there. So enjoyed working five minutes from home instead of an hour and a half. So, um, I spent about three years there under, uh, him and the city manager just doing, uh, city budgets, special projects, utility rate with specials. Uh, and he had special projects that the city manager. So after some time there, a position opened up at St. Helens and, uh, seemed like a good fit and applied in. Been there ever since for almost six years. So while, uh, at Forest Grove and, uh, St. Helens, I've continued to kind of grow my professional development here. So I have gone back to school. I received my MBA from Al Hurst University in Portland. Um, after that, while at St. Helens, I finished an executive leadership program from Harvard Business School for public leadership. And, uh, actually I'm about three or four weeks away from my HR management certificate from Black screen college. So there was an opportunity at St. Helens that, uh, in St. Helens, we don't have an HR department, uh, so that relies on the city administrator. So this was an opportunity to kind of grow those skills a little bit. So. See.
Also, and, uh, the other question is, say, describe your leadership style and how you have developed that style.
Okay, so my leadership style, I subscribe to a certain. So in my professional opinion, it is my job to make sure that the employees that work with me at the city have all the necessary tools and resources. That's my job to effectively communicate you as city council, what those resources may be that we need to reach those goals that you have set out. So, um, I continually strive to develop myself professionally as well as my staff. I'm a big proponent of going to conferences and trainings for all of our staff members to continue that professional development and growth. And as I mentioned, I really just try and do as much as I can to make sure my staff has resources to do their job.
Thank you.
So. Something about what you feel the most important elements are between labor and management partnership and, um, a time where you and labor didn't agree on an issue and how you resolved that.
I think one of the most important aspects is communication. At the city of St. Helens, we have two unions, the police union and AST. And when I got there, it was very, uh, much of us versus them mentality. And that's taken the current city administrator, uh, as well as myself, probably about four or five years to really cultivate that growth of communication. And we started doing the, uh, instead of meeting, you know, once or three years or four years. We set up, uh, what started as quarterly labor meetings. And that was an opportunity for us to meet one-on-one with the unions and just talking to them. How's it going? What's going on? What things can we fix? You know, just because it's not a contract. Adjustments that happen, you don't have three years to negotiate. So it's not needed. So, um, over those few years, those quarterly meetings have really helped evolve that communication standard, uh, where it's not us versus them. It's what we as a city kind of bring that group of culture together. And what was the second part of that question?
And there was a time when, um, you yourself didn't agree with something with labor or administration thought differently than they ever did and how that was.
One instance that I can think of was about three years. We had, uh, uh, I was switching. And at the time, administration had been ahead of salary compensation for those positions to just make sure, because I had a suspicion that they were a little bit underpaid. And it came back as though they were underpaid and we brought that to the union. You know, it's not very often we get to go in and say, hey, we want to give you rates.
And maybe you can say that.
Yeah. Well, surprisingly, uh, what it came down to is the union taking a stand. So, well, if you increase this person's job for two salary, you have to oppress everybody else because there's disparity of where that falls in the range and this person should make more than this person. So we've agreed to disagree, um, those employees. At, at least let staff know that that was a union decision and, uh, think of it through. So politely agree to disagree and, uh, see you at the next day of the year.
How did you feel was important to that stuff?
I'm a big proponent of transparency. And as far as I'm concerned, everything I do in my job, even outside of my job, can be a perception of for that. And so when we do a study and it comes back that you're a big concern, that's an issue. I think it's only fair to let that employee know that here's the results of the study that we did. Here's what we found. Here's what we tried to do with the union. It was agreed upon. So imagine it's going to take a step back and. As much as hard as that for a way to hear that, yeah, we understand your end of day, but we can't do anything about it. So that's issues and I will. And that's a management decision or if it's a labor.
Mike, I think you're up.
How will you balance the needs of your department heads, staff with goals and priorities of the council?
For the first three years at St. Helens, the city did not have a strategic plan. So we went around our day-to-day business. Things came up, we'd done, um, no real vision of what we're doing. And so about three years ago, myself and another employee asked the city administrator to do a strategic plan. And we took over. And what we did was devise and met as, as departments, managers as a whole, and we put together projects and staff knew that we should probably. And then you met the city council and said, we're projecting. And then we combined and see where there's stuff missing, see where everything lies in priority. We gave city council that list to the right ones because ultimately we're the city and we are, it is our jobs to accomplish what's happening. So we rely on council to set the priority levels on question. Now, if there's a discussion that needs to happen, the department head really thinks this should be a priority like that. Um, there are ways for us to have a meaningful discussion, uh, to allow that city manager to provide that. Um, but ultimately the decision lies in the council. So I see that as one of the best to still manage the department manager to achieve all these. So every city wants to be part of the same. They talk about what's going on in the department, what's coming up, but it's also a checking point for those strategic plans. You have three or four goals that you have. You may report on anything else. We're definitely going to talk about those people that's wearing their hats.
It should. So you, you, you would do that every? So for us, just revise or just go where.
Correct. So for, uh, for informing the city council, anytime that we achieve a goal or finish something, we definitely in some positive conversations. We've talked about it publicly in the city council. It's the strategic plan is a very public process. So we have an online checkup or he says, hey, let's, let's see. Oh, okay. Here's those, you know, eighteen goals that we're going to do in the next two years. We set out a two-year strategy. Uh, so we had a checking point and we cross that goal off of the website where you can cross completely.
I love that.
But that's, that's part of that transparency tool of informing the community of what we're actually doing. And then they can go see, they click on a project and there's like usually a little report of the project. Here's what we're doing. Here's why we're doing it. Here's how it's funded. All this kind of basic knowledge information. That are good things for you as a council member. Question, what are you doing for us? Why don't you go here and see the six projects we've got over the next two years that will really fix.
Lynn, again, um, you mentioned before that you have a certain leadership style.
Yes.
Um, can you better define what that is and, uh, maybe give some examples?
I think one of the best ways to explain it is. Imagine you as a council and as an organization and we have this circle and everything outside, everything outside these walls, it's some sort of danger. It's a recession. It's inflation. It's the economy. It's a saber-toothed tiger, whatever you want to call it, you're in major trouble. And I see it as my duty to help build that circle of trust and comfort for employees and the organization to work with ease. No matter what's going on, on the outside, every employee should have the right to come to an organization that they feel welcomed, trusted to do their job. And that's part of my job as a city manager to make sure that the council and the organization are all involved within that. That kind of give you a better explanation. You know, it's a little touchy.
Thank you. Please give me an example of how we can address the issue of affordable housing in unicorns.
I think there are a lot of little things that the city council and as an organization, the city can do to help contribute to affordable housing. Um, obviously it's not within our duty to start going out for houses, uh, or affordable houses by that part. But there are definitely ways and means to contribute to organizations that help us. So whether that be working more hand-in-hand with places like Habitat or. Or, uh, it's St. Helens, we have a community action, uh, that help out veterans and, uh, people with disabilities or, um, low income and like that. Um, but it's just helping support those organizations that can do those things. Uh, and I think that's where the permi city government is, is how we can, we can provide resources for them to do their jobs and that. Other notes would be, you know, how how approachable or responsive we may be to governments higher than you. Um, that means the state, um, looking at legislature and what you can do as far as, um, words of inspiration or direction of where you want to see the state go in assistance for those kinds of things. So you as the leaders have a need to reach out to those alternative resources and help contribute from those, from those.
I follow. So what, uh, so that's great for background for people during crisis need, but what would you do, um, to make housing more affordable? So the actual decrease of home prices or what, what would you do? From a city perspective?
From a city perspective? One thing that the city can do is look at their land use codes and regulations. Um, and that would rely on what kind of terrain there is around the city, uh, whether it's multi-house or mixed use, those kinds of uses to help encourage builders, developers. One thing that we've done in St. Helens, they had done this right before I came, is they had purchased a very large industrial piece of land. And it's taken seven, eight years to get to the point of great development, but we are to that point now. But it's encouraging developers because we own the property and the city council made a very conscious decision that we want to own the destiny of what that property is in the future. So by doing so and owning the property, you can put restrictions and limitations or rules in place because you own it of what you want to be developed. So if you as a council say, we want mixed use, we want, uh, you know, whatever kind of use you want in that area. You can go through a land use process and follow laws, align and everything. Typically they do. There's always who you have to jump through, but, uh, there is a process to help encourage that.
Follow on from that. So. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Now, man, this, I shall diverge a little bit, but okay, so first, this piece of industrial land, did you, you are using urban renewal for it or?
We will be. So the city, um, six years ago did not have an urban renewal.
Okay.
Um, we were just in the beginning stages of looking into it. Uh, about three years ago, we did start. And we did include within the territory of urban renewal that development area.
Was this the one that was, was it ground field?
Yes, part of, part of it. It was the Boise White Paper.
Boise, yeah, that's a good one. You've heard a little bit about that over here.
So yes, I, I am familiar with the White Paper. So, uh, yes, but I, if I could say it's, it's a very long process.
Yeah.
And larger processes, I'm sure you've already, uh, seen, uh, the biggest thing I can say is keep your eye on that. Because if it does get there, you will get. Like St. Helens, it took seven, eight years for us to get there and we're not even, you know, building yet, but we have the land going out for her. It's very hard to come in. So we've gotten to that. It's a very long road.
Yeah, thank you. Can I ask?
So, um, how large is that?
That you want to develop, not the holes.
So there are, we've divided it into three separate areas. Boise also. And so we will take that portion of what's called the near company and that's going to be the stage one. Not some. Uh, and then we have the second stage, which is what we call our central park. That's our large. Uh, our lagoon for our two. Was built in Boise. Uh, this is, and so that will be exactly about ten times the size of St. Helens. So even with Boise gone, still operate. Okay, that's ten times the size. So there are costs associated with that. Uh, and then the, we inherited a piece of gasket tissue which is still not finished there and on that central water. And so the third section is our, what we're classified as the justus industrial. So that is, um, a large chunk of rock. We are just now. Instead of going out for that big fish, um, we've had that big fish and we see more of Newburgh. So it's better to spread out that risk and look for lots of smaller industrial.
Brilliant.
Yeah, you get.
Now I'm going to work for you.
Well, it just really.
Okay. I'm going to practice this question with, I'm really proud of our council right now with everything that's going on in our community. We are all on different sides in the political spectrum and I feel like we have a really good working relationship. So I don't want this question to scare you away.
I could probably share your stories of St. Helens. Why I wasn't scared to complain.
But we are, this is a great cut. Okay, the city of Newburgh and outlying areas have surely been under siege the last ten months over the recall of two school board members and the county commissioner, both of which did not have. I am afraid that with upcoming elections, the city council may go over some of the same partisan bickering that we have all been privy to for almost a year. For positions that are supposed to be partisan, our town is truly divided and I personally am saddened and angered by these antics. People, friends, family members are now at odds with each other over these actions and literally cannot discuss them with each other, being afraid to distance, distance themselves further. Woo. It is true. As city manager, what are two things that you can do to prevent down or downplay anything like this happening at the city council level with outside forces or among other council members themselves? Okay, so I'm going to say it again. As a city manager, what are two things that you can do to help prevent or downplay anything like this happening at the city council level with outside forces or among, uh, among the council members themselves? How are we going to keep us?
Welcome to my percentage.
Tell me.
Trust me, I have. You're a creature of the.
Two things. I think one of the first things I can do and help promote as a city manager is communication. And keeping those lines of communication open and transparent. No matter what side you are on, whether it's political or where you fall on the timeline. Of this, this, the wide spectrum. There is always common. As a city manager, keeping those lines of communications and transparency open, I believe allows both sides to communicate effectively to come to that common goal. I go back in St. Helens to our strategic plan and it's updated every two years. The entire council agreed to that strategic plan and those specific goals. Whether you're on the left, right, up or down, it does not matter. You've all agreed with ease on those strategic plans. And that's what my job is, you know, the city staff and the city. Whatever they make. And so in the midst of any potential agreement or, I would strive to keep you headed on that road to accomplishing those strategic goals. So that was probably that was one. On the heels of my comment about transparency, I would say involving the community with opportunities as much as you can. At the city of St. Helens, about a year and a half ago, we did a community survey, which was every two years along with the strategic plan. And we had had an over, I think it was ninety-one percent approval rates. And this was right in the midst of everything bad going in the country, uh, and the war. And after we got those results, I went into the city administrator. And to give you a, a brief background, our police station is, we have about twenty-five FDAs, about nineteen patrol officers, everybody else. And they share a facility that is twenty-one hundred square feet, less than most houses in the city. On top of that, it was built in nineteen fifty. So it is fifty. That's four years. Sorry, I'm not. It is fifty years old, so seventy. Uh, and it's been through a couple iterations of council saying, yeah, we want to, you know, build on to it or add on to it. And yeah, we need more police space and it never got past, never got to that threshold. I went to the city administrator and the mayor and said, we have the support of the community right now. Let's take advantage of it. We can't kill the facility. And so myself and the police chief, we put together a task force of everybody in the city that we thought would be consistent. Every naysayer that came to city council complained about this, complained about that. We for, you know, people who have had meetings with them. We have probably a group of about twenty-five, thirty people around a table and we met almost religiously. We, we bi-weekly, we discuss, what do you think about the city? What safety facilities? Here's what we're thinking of, what would be, what would be in it? And every single person at that table, all it took was a tour. And I said, how do you mean to do your job? And, you know, getting a small grid device is very different than getting an entire community. And so we figured out all the nuts and bolts, all the funding strategies that we came up with, which the city council said, let's take the show in the room and let's see what kind of reaction. And myself and the police chief, we did twenty-seven community engagements. We did this over three months. So we did Monday nights, Thursday nights on Zoom in person. I mean, we were everywhere and anywhere we could be. We went to the Democratic Party, the Republican Party, the Green Party, any group that would meet with us, we met with. And we talked about what the needs were, where we want to go in the future and how we're going to find. The city council saw those results of the community and overwhelmingly supported it and stayed with our funding strategies. And I think it is that we gave the community every opportunity that can get. If you didn't know, we were building a public safety facility, lived under a rock, had no interest in your city at all. But giving the community, they were in sticker four initially, giving them an opportunity to. Giving them an opportunity to see what we're doing, why. And the why is the most important. You can explain that to the community and get them to understand that. That is your biggest challenge. Is understanding them.
Thank you. What's the population?
Fourteen thousand.
Were those community events well attended or they were available and made more?
Some of them, yes. Some of them we had. Others, like, uh, the last, or last one we had, which was in person, I think we had like thirty, forty people maybe. Which for St. Helens was. Like for the state.
So on that, how are you, how are you going?
It's a combination. This is where I get to stretch my financial.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah.
Getting you a softball, right? So we did a combination of the two things. The first thing was we did not, the city council agreed that it was going to cost a lot of money. And I showed them the mechanics of what would cost a property tax bill versus putting something on YouTube. So a portion of the public safety facility would be funded by three dollar or potentially four dollar uh, fee on the. Sorry, on the utility bill. The other portion, part of the industrial business part, is that we have a, um, marijuana growths that we sold a piece of property of the brownfields to that.
You guys are investing in marijuana, right?
It is. You have no idea. So we have a brownfield in our industrial business part. There is not much you can farm.
No interest.
So we initially had a company from California come up. Couldn't figure out the arrangement. Didn't work out. Hadn't had another marijuana grow facility come in. Crossed off all the boxes, agreed to everything that we talked about. We initially missed a bracket. When they started to go through the order process to get their marijuana license and everything, we found out, oh, you can't lease land from government.
Uh, there goes.
But what we can do is sell them the product. So we, we parceled off the brownfield area, sold it to them and it was an owner financed. So they pay a mortgage to the city of St. Helens, just like anybody else. The proceeds from that mortgage are being funded to the public safety facility over the next ten years. So even though you may not agree with the use of marijuana or the city selling property to a marijuana grower, something like that, you, most of the community has at least understood that this is not for you.
Ready finance.
So how do you feel about that?
They are totally okay. And, and actually, we have a very good relationship with the row facility. So I, it's actually been a partnership, um, which I think is surprising.
So do you like Jeff or watch cities in St. Helens too?
We do. We have three, three shops now.
It's a nice pick. So you've got mortgage money coming in and the taxes on their month. So you, you guys are.
So, so those were two areas. The third way was that the city, um, council has dedicated cannabis tax and some of the sin taxes that we see about state chair revenue. So your alcohol.
Right.
Um, cigarette tax, specifically the cannabis tax towards public. So between those three lanes, if something falls. So. Right out of that.
Right, right. Well, thank you.
Well, you kind of stole my thunder. The last one, but I'm going to ask him anyway. What, if any role do you believe the community has in shaping the direction of the city's future? And what steps have you taken in the past to ensure that the community feels represented in your work?
One of the best ways we can do that is through community surveys. And as I mentioned in St. Helens, we do this every two years. And we have a person dedicated to government relations and community engagement. And that person literally meets the pavement during that two, three month period of when we have those community surveys. So they're going almost to the point of knocking on doors and saying, hey, have you filled out a survey? But that at least provides the city council with information from the community as a whole as to what they see, where there's potential issues, what they're not satisfied with, and what they are very satisfied with. So that's probably one of the. I'm going to notice that in addition to that, um, it would be having public comment period at every public meeting. Uh, we make that a requirement. Just to give any kind of opportunity for that.
All right. Sure, of course, first.
Do you know, um, how do you, how does either your community engagement individual or your department heads or you or your standard, how do you engage with community members to ensure that your committees of the city runs? Are a good representation of your community as a whole and don't end up being the same twelve people that are on every board?
Yes, or like all your.
Budget committee.
It means everything. It's not easy. Because it's always the same twelve people that are from this commission.
And we love those people.
And they're great because they understand how things work already. I get it.
Or what would you?
You can't force people to volunteer.
I wish we could. Sorry.
You can, I believe that the council put limitations on how long people serve on people's in general. So that would refrain people from going from the legislature to the budget committee, the budget committee to the state chair. Whatever those force commissions may be. So you as a policy member can create that policy that would likely eventually lead to small companies. And I think it is all about how you engage the public. As far as you mentioned about department heads or myself as a city manager. And that's I would almost encourage what we did for about a year or so. Until COVID hit. We actually had monthly meetings and we tagged it on to the business chamber. We had this little monthly morning coffee chat kind of thing. And we would send a delegate from the city. From different departments at each. So whether it's finance director one time or the city administrator one time. Planning, uh, the city planner or building official, we would each take our turn every single month at going to those meetings to make sure that we're not just a voice on the phone and that people see who we are. And it gives them an opportunity because not everybody loves coming to city hall with Dr. Goodyear official or our city manager. But they, we appear more approachable, we're out in the public.
What do you think is the thing that stops people from actually volunteering for a city? Is it? Not great, it's voluntold.
I would say it's fear of the unknown. Many people, I think generally, don't like governments in doing with bureaucracy. They see it on the news every night and it's what happens in Washington, which is, don't want to be involved in it. On a local level, there's a little bit more control of what you can show people. What you do as a council, what the parks commission does, uh, the plant commission does on a regular basis. It, it takes time and engagement with your community. On more than a quarter basis, that's state of the city, you know, once a year. But it's really getting out in the public and talking and letting them know that you're human being, just like everybody else, you have to go eat lunch, go to the bathroom, I mean. It's really, just takes time to come. And that can take a lot of time. But it's worth it in the end.
Awesome. All right. Well, we've got about five minutes left, it looks like. So, uh, do you have questions for us or did we miss anything that we should have asked?
I would like to tell you that this is not the first time I've applied for.
Oh, really?
I have been interested the last two times.
Interested.
And there's a reason I keep applying because I want to work in this. I have friends, uh, several friends up within the community. So quite often our families get together. I love my job in St. Helens and I could probably work there for the rest of my life. With that said, it allows me the opportunity to select where I choose to apply and where I want to, if I wanted to, that next step. And it is something that I have no intention of not applying and not taking the job at all.
Thank you.
What's? Uh, so would you, would you plan to move here? Not that you have to, but are you trying to be a part of the community, be a family because of your, you're their friends?
Yep. Yep. Yeah, it would be my plan to, to move into the community. Timing wise, um, with how housing is.
Happy celebrating.
Yes. Yes, it can happen if you offer me the job. What's that?
Where are you living, St. Helens?
No, I actually live in Bethany.
Okay.
So it's about a forty-five minute. It's not horrible and I don't mind the commute. But I would like that. So. Why do you live? What's that? Why do you live in Bethany? Um, I had literally just bought the house and just closed, literally moving there when I accepted the job. So, uh, as, as I'm sure you know, Bethany is a great area to live in. And it's, it's a great area to live in and I would recommend it as a. Who can? But yeah, the forty-five minute drive.
My mom's teacher Jacob was there.
Well, anything else? Any other questions for us? How many kids do you have? Start with that?
Oh.
Sorry, sorry.
Let me, let me just tell you a little bit about this. Sorry, sorry. Never. So, uh, I've been married since two thousand and six. Happily and have one daughter. Uh, she is just going into sixth grade next year. Uh, so it's a perfect time of transition to a new community as middle school begins. And, uh, my wife stays at home. Uh, we made that decision when my daughter was born. We, uh, had the means and options for her to do that. It's been a great choice.
Thanks. Thank you. Thank you, Doug. Off, off the record. All right. Well, good. Anything else for us?
No.
All right. Your next, uh, next stop?
Thank you.
All right. Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
All right. We will, we'll start as, uh, you know us, but we will go through the, the same introduction we did before, just so you know. And then, uh, we'll go around the room. So Rick Rogers, mayor and been in Newburgh since nineteen ninety-nine.
Uh, Jefferson Milneberger, city councilman in Newburgh since second grade. In the Navy and back here, been on the council for.
I have pride, born and raised here, uh, council since January.
And we have not met. I'm in NYG, so. Um, I am not part of the council, obviously, but I'm a part of the business, sitting on the council. And I own, uh, the votes conference meetings down the road. Been here since twenty, excuse me, oh, one, signed the papers on nine, twelve, oh, one.
No.
Oh, my goodness.
Before this is really smart.
Well, it was really smart. It was really smart.
I've been here for twenty-four, I think it's actually twenty-five, two years.
Police, Sierra Hall, I've been on council since two thousand and eighteen with the works of that one. Stephanie Lee, councillor for about three and a half years and we've been here for almost nine years.
All right. So if you could introduce yourself, although we largely know you, but, uh, if you could introduce yourself. Yeah. And then follow up with, uh, your leadership style and how you have developed that stuff.
So, um, Will Worthy, uh, lifelong career in library work and library science and archiving. I've been here in town since twenty nineteen, serving in the capacity of library director. And I have a keen interest in reading anything historical. I like dragon boating, although I haven't done much of that lately. And, um, I really find Newburgh to have a very unique vibe and cool downtown. And that's what one of the reasons attracted me to Newburgh.
Uh, and so describe your leadership style and how you have developed that somewhat.
So I would, my leadership style really began at a very young age, simply from watching other people supervise me. So for example, when I was a team shover, you know, doing various sort of corporate tasks, I would see which people were more effective at getting the team to do things holistically. And then others that were less effective because they would have a, a barkeep or a dogmatic way of speaking to people, which often didn't get a lot of success. The first times that I was involved in, in being a leader personally were during my period of national service in the British Army, where I was in charge of small teams, four or five soldiers at a time doing discreet tasks and always, you know, under direct control of somebody. But learning, you know, how to get along with folks of different sorts and get things done. Then in my profession, I have gone through all of the library settings within that department structure. From being a children's librarian for many years with a small team to leave up, up through having all libraries to leave. And that was a time when I would say there was more reflection, more chance to think about how I do things. And I think it's very important for leaders to have some self-reflection and to be humble and not just go with, uh, a dog, a dogmatic management theory, but actually reflect upon how that interacts with their own values. Now, something that has become really trendy lately has been the servant leadership buzzword. Everybody paying lip service to it. But actually, I think of the, of the many management phrases that have come out in recent years, that one actually is the most meaningful. And I, I feel really lucky that a lot of younger leaders are getting to hear that message from the, the high up people in various big corporations and organizations. Put it simply, I endorse this ethos, which means you should be willing to do anything that you would ask your people to do. You will not be arrogant. You will jump in. You'll be flexible. And think of yourself as a servant of the people you lead. Not just a servant of the community members, but also the team. And that's an approach which I tried to implement. As a concrete example, because we, once again, management talk, right? When I look for what we should do next about a specific policy or problem. I always shape it first in a kind of a fuzzy way. Bounce it off of the people who are on the team. And invite them to rewrite it, to give me feedback, and or prioritize what order we should do things in. That then, that synthesis thing creates the final product. So I think that's servant leadership in terms of management.
Thank you.
Uh, tell me about, or actually tell me what you feel the most important. Elements are labor and management, in partnership. And then tell me about a time when, uh, you and labor disagreed about something.
So, in order to have. Good working relationships between labor and management. I think the most important quality is a simple one, it's called honesty or integrity. In other words. Don't tell labor a bunch of baloney. If there's something you can't afford to do, or it's not within the city's budget, or the team's budget, you have to spill that out and be very honest with them. As an example, in the beginning, the police were looking for a fifteen percent quota. But that's not realistic within our budget structure. And so I was, I had to tell them, if we were to implement a quota like that, that would mean we would not be able to hire any new police officers, even after the new neighborhood's built out. It just wouldn't be affordable. By being honest with them, we were able to negotiate down to a more reasonable price to everybody's satisfaction. Examples where these things have not gone as well. I can remember a time at one of the libraries where I ran, we implemented a digital scheduling tool. The purpose of which was to make the schedule more transparent to everybody and avoid gaps in service during overlap periods. It was a bit of a train wreck, frankly, it, it didn't really do what we, what it was intended to do. It did create tension with my labor force. They felt that it caused clock watching among staff, and it was less, um. Less forgiving and less open than having a more relaxed approach that we did previously. Now, we did modify the system to make it explicit that we weren't going to hold people to shift changes. Except within a ten-minute window, because things happen. But, uh, but yeah, that initially, that didn't go well. We had to re曲.
How will you ba- balance the needs of your department head staff with the goals and priorities of the council?
In the city manager. Form of government. There is a city manager, there's a council, council provides the city manager with strategic objectives. They should be clearly enunciating so that everybody within the organization can understand where the council wants the city to go. The actions taken by the leadership team, including the city manager, should be responsive and then take tactical elements of that overall strategic vision. To enact them. How do we do this when we have a room full of A-type personalities? Because everybody who's a department head are all there because they're usually over on the right-hand side of the desk schedule. The way to do that, I think, is to have open and frank discussions on a weekly basis at our leadership meetings. Where we can have collegiality and where nobody is afraid to speak out. Although usually with this group of leaders, it's not that anyone's afraid to speak. It's, it's usually by their peers, they're all very bold people, so. Perhaps, in terms of running those meetings, it's more about making sure that everybody gets a little bit of camera time. And then someone doesn't pull forth too much to drown out the voices of somebody else's in the room. From there. The ideas, when I get an issue, should then be folded into a planning matrix, a fo- a formal planning matrix. In my case, I like to use observe, orient, decide, act, the OODA loop, as a management strategy. If operational plans have to be devised by senior staff, it's good to always think about the situation, the mission, and the execution. As you develop a plan. But those are tools in the toolbox. As long as everybody gets a chance to speak, nobody hogs the limelight too much, and as long as we're honest with each other, everyone can stay. I think that we can do great.
My question you've answered already, or at least a, a lot of it, but, um, what in your opinion is a servant leader? And does this definition, uh, describe you? So you've talked about it already, can you dive a little deeper and tell us anything that you haven't said yet?
So. First of all, I'll say, what I'm allowed to say is not just blather. You, you know my staff, you can check with my staff. Everything I'm allowed to say is, is accurate. I am always willing to act at whatever echelon I need to, to get the mission done. If that means I have to manufacture hand sanitizer because we can't get any, or I have to carve little pieces of elastic to make five thousand masks. I'm going to do those tasks, nothing is menial. And there should be no perception that any task within the whole organization is a menial task. That's the definition of servant leadership. Doing the right thing, making sure that everyone within the organization can see that you're doing the right thing to support people at the more junior level. Also, when you're thinking about that approach, it's important that there is an ethical standard that exists throughout the whole organization. And that you work to maintain that standard. That means that a servant leader. Should be thoughtful. They should be careful. They should make sure that they never do many actions involving moral turpitude. Because once you lose the credibility of being a leader, you can't be a servant leader.
Thank you. Give me an example of how we can address the issue of reform of housing in New York.
There is an organization which has committed to work with a land sale development to bring several hundred of affordable housing units to town. And that can be leveraged if one recently received through set quarter. Or will receive soon, should I say, as a windfall. That program is going to greatly accelerate the ability to have affordable housing units set to sixty or seventy percentile of K and L. So. That's something that's already on the books. Apart from that, I would say that we always just have to keep an open eye. And look at our planning strategy as we move forward. Particularly as we move to the next development in a comprehensive plan, and make sure that we always have that angle open. For affordable housing developments. But, as I foolishly alluded to a moment ago. That there is some real progress coming in the near future.
Hey. Done one. Take a round, it's really long. The city of Newburgh and outline areas have truly been at their siege the last ten months, over the recall of two school board members and the county commissioner. I'm afraid that with upcoming elections, the city council may go through some of the same partisan bickering that we have all been privy to for almost a year. For positions that are supposed to be bipartisan. Nonpartisan, our town is truly divided, and I personally am saddened and angered by these antics. People, friends, family members are now at odds with each other over these actions and literally cannot discuss them with each other, being afraid to distance themselves further. It's a little different because you have been here, so you know. As city manager, what are two things that you can do to help prevent or doubtplay anything like this? Happening at the city council level with outside forces or among the council members themselves?
Okay, so you're, you're correct, this is a super hard question. The reality is that since the city manager works for council. But at the same time leads the city staff and serves as your staff. It's a tremendous challenge to get the council to, to do anything over these sorts of issues. In other words, I could issue some platitude about trying to manage up to avoid contention. But the reality is that it's very, very difficult. I think that the only approach that stands a chance of working in this particularly divided town is, one, keep the city, in terms of the staff. Strictly non-political, and keep the city staff out of political turmoil. And that may provide a good example for council as they do their work. Second.
What does that look like?
It, it looks like this, when people ask you to remove signs from the public right of way, you make sure that you remove them evenly. Even-handedly and resist any pressure from outside to do something that is not in our code, as a specific example. And the same with any other issues that come up like that. Now, with respect to the other part of it. I think that council can do better in terms of keeping partisan rankord down. If council focuses upon the strategic goals that they have jointly agreed to consider together. Now, I'll be frank. I consider our current strategic goals are excellent but lacking in detail. In other words, I would like to see a few more bullet points under each of those headings about practical approaches that we want to try to achieve as a city. If we can do that, and if we can then focus upon those goals. I am optimistic that some degree of partisan rankor will be avoided in the council's general. Hope springs eternal.
Okay, my turn. What, if any, role do you believe the community has in shaping the direction of the city's future? And what steps have you taken in the past to ensure that the community feels represented in your work?
I believe that the community's will in terms of shaping the future of Newburgh has absolute legitimacy. For any of you who sit in an elected chair, this should be the first thing you think about in the morning and the last thing you think about in the night. The goals that are reflected to you from community opinion should be the things that guide us. Now, we've been surveying our community to death in recent months, but I think there is a place for an ongoing survey process. And there are some new ways of doing that which are going to become available soon, for example, the Tyler Technologies application has a MyCity app. Which you can use to get opinions on, but you can also use to pay your water bill, which means it ought to get a pretty good level of saturation. So, surveying and listening, particularly from the electeds, is how we should get our direction, and that should also feed into our strategic planning direction. My experience in this area. I have worked with the CPOs in Washington County over a wide range of issues, some were DEI-related, some were to do with police services. And many of them were not library-related. There were about a wide range of different civic issues. Such as when Washington rolled out its Kahoot-style mental health response units. That came from direct feedback from the communities who wanted to see something done to help people over having mental health crisis. That has been the basis of my experience. Also, in working in libraries, I've often worked with people who were in various groups that were underrepresented, ignored, or marginalized. To get them services of a variety of sorts, whether it be something such as passing a citizenship test, or whether it was something of working on getting a billing statement simplified. And I have carried forward that work into the last seven months. For example, to give you a concrete example, I created a waiver form for people who had water shut-offs. That would enable them to get their physician to fill out a document saying that they had a medical emergency and for that reason could not have their water shut off. That was something that didn't exist until I got here, and there are several people who are either on dialysis or have other issues, are able to keep their services going because of that.
Right, um, all right, well, we've got a couple of minutes, questions for us, any questions, or anything, or, or if there's something we need to touch on, if we should, no?
So. I spoke to my mentors, which is Abigail Elder in Hood River, and Jesse Van Der Zandt in Forest Cove. And I asked those very experienced folks what I should say to you at this point in the interview. And they have recommended that I ask you a hard question. And here is the question. What does success look like from the council perspective two years from now?
Uh, okay, going around the table, um, I guess I'll start, I guess that's where we're starting, um. Success to me would be, um, you know, obviously achieving the goals the council has set, et cetera, working towards those goals. Uh, but I think even more, more. Not importantly, but more immediately. I think we need some continuity at city hall. Uh, I think we need to stop some of the turnover at city manager position particularly. Uh, and I think we need to continue to vet, to develop what I think we're seeing in terms of teamwork among the department heads and the staff. That was actually one of our goals, to get rid of the. So, that to me would be success, because I think that will yield results, it'll be, we'll be able to see the accomplishments, and the community will, will see those accomplishments as well.
Hey, yeah, I would agree with your comment about, uh, inside internal turmoil being gone, you can't, uh, you can't help anyone else if you're. Struggling to sort things out from a, uh, when I joined the council, my hopes were that, uh, that they'd come a year and feel that. Metrics go wrong with their roles, so not to say, you know, we're gonna. You know, work with the program slightly quickly, but actually said, what are those issues that we're, we're gonna focus on, we're gonna use their tools for housing, tools for water, so to. And be very, very specific with the metrics.
More data-driven?
Yeah, very, very data-driven is the way I would like to see that, and along with that, I'd like to see a community transparency with that. Uh, there's a lot of, um, places that have a really great scorecard, we produce a lot of information. But, uh, a scorecard just makes you need to say, oh, thank you, it's out there, my council person is performing on getting these goals and meeting these metrics. I think that level of trans, I think we owe that to our taxpayers, we owe that to the people we represent, to show that we're actually working on issues that they're, that they find relevant. And some of our statistics being on these are important to them. Uh, as, you know, what they've said is important, so if you have a dashboard needs to reflect what the community's values are, not necessarily the goals of the city. That's nice.
I'd like to see us, um, working more strategically. On what those clear goals are and working and planning on, uh, bringing in better high-paying jobs, which means we have to really plan. Of what areas are we going to sell? And work in that endeavor, I think it's really important that we do that, because that's what keeps the identity of our town. Where we, instead of becoming a veteran community, we have more of our identity. I would hope that we would stay out of the political arena and focus on city stuff and not. City. Tasks and projects. So, yeah, and I, I want to see. So, yeah, and I want to see a way of measuring our successes. Like, kind of along foot, jumping in this. I want to really see a focus everywhere.
I would go with that answer, even though I'm not part of the council. From a business perspective. I'd like to see more boots on the ground from the city manager, maybe the council, maybe the lead staff. And you talked about the strategic plan and you talked about, what was it? But the scorecard, I think you both mentioned that. What are the five things the strategic plan really wants to accomplish? And it takes a long time to develop those plans. But taking that to chamber meetings, taking them to businesses, knocking on doors and. Saying, this is what this is, this is what we're doing, these are the things that we are at, and check this off. Communicating that to the business community and the rest of the community. I don't think people know exactly what the city is doing. It's probably on the website, but the number of people that actually turn to the website and look at that may not be very high. So actually face-to-face, look at the lines, this is what we're gonna be doing for the next five years.
You know, you're right, because when I did a presentation or a brochure about how the money moves around. People were like, oh, they've never heard of that.
But hearing it from the mouth instead of reading it on the website, right?
I agree.
So I agree with what you said about the goals. You can't just have. Sustainability is a goal because it doesn't have rules, different things, different people, and actually figure out that. And what we're gonna accomplish in that, absolutely agree. So that's one of them. Team. You, I've already seen a huge improvement, I already feel a huge improvement, I already get told there's team, team. And the team goes more than just. More than just your department heads. How those department heads react to their own teams is also, you know, a point of. We have really good, we have medium, we have, you know, really working on their skills. And supporting, supporting not only your team, but the team of us. Which, you know. Something else that, you know, really, you can, and you kind of shine a light on this in a different way. Continue, continuing to solve issues quickly. Don't wait for them to fester somewhere and blow up into something bigger. Just continue to, this is an issue, let's fix it today. Yes, this is a complaint, let's fix it today. And really making people, all the people which you talked about, I was the same way. My dishwasher was the most important person in the building. If you don't have a clean dish, you can just forget about everything else. You cook, the chef can't jet and the waitress can't figure it out and it's probably never free. So the bottom layers of our organization that people don't see, the hidden parts of. Should be treated with respect that they may have never received. Show up, you know, in the building, show up for the events they have. Really be, really be visible and recognizable on the street. To not only the citizens, but the people who are often not considered, not. Not seen.
I agree with all the counselors, what they have said, which is awesome. I would say the only thing I would add is that it's a really tough position to be in. Thinking of yourself really as the executive of the organization, so you're accountable to your staff, to your board, and then also to the community. And I think balancing that in a non-inflammatory, non-emotional, you know. Very level-headed approach is just really hard at that level and I feel it. But it's like, that I think is why we have council sets. One of those pieces, either community, staff, or council, is one of those pieces missing. And so I think that is the task in front of you of not leaning, not jumping into your level, your area of expertise. And really letting the library go as you develop from day three team, right? You trust your team and really stepping into your role and trusting your people. So that's what I think is really important. I will just challenge, I think, since I have that great question. But that's going to be the job, right, for the next year. So it's really being a leader, and seen as leader of the community that can provide that level of balance. Know when it's important to speak up, know when it's important not to speak up. So that's not boring, but I love all the things you've talked about.
One more thing that I wrote that I couldn't remember why I did it. Mike brought it up yesterday, that that was the legal notice. No one, no one had a clue what it even said.
Yeah, it was dropping.
It was great. So, okay, I get it, that's the legal notice, but that doesn't mean that you can't write.
What it actually is.
On that legal notice. At the, I had no idea what it was either. Right on top, like, this is about law law.
When I go mine, I concur.
Okay, all right. So that was that I was like, I can't breathe, right?
The font was too small, the graphics were too compressed. And it didn't have a clear mission statement attached to it.
Yes.
But we also have to remember. I have to avoid, while I have to dip slings like that, I also have to not micromanage them.
Yes.
Right, right, right.
So that's the balance there, right?
So that could come from the top then. Include a, include a role.
What this is.
Right? Tell us what this is and what made the legal notice.
That's an actionable point in the customer service standard.
Yes, there you go.
Is having a clarifying statement on documents to be delivered. Duly noted.
Okay.
Sorry, Steph. That's okay. I think for me, looking at what success would look like in a couple of years, there's, I mean, there's a number of ways to measure that. But I think something, some things that are important to me is that in looking down the road two years, the city of Newburgh would be a premier employer. And there, I mean, there's lists and lists underneath that, but that means there's a shift in culture. Employment practices are good, relationships with our unions are good, communication with our employees is good. So I think that's one measure for me of success. And the other would be a robust relationship with the community. And that that relationship would be a two-way street. So making sure that we're both communicating but also educating the public. But also creating avenues for feedback that is actually worked upon. For the community business owners, other people to get to us. And I also think in thinking about that, finding that good balance around. You know, the part of being a premier employer is knowing that the experts live in this building. And that while we are giving feedback from the community, we also need to trust that. Joe Blow has an opinion about engineering, but we also need to trust our engineers. And so finding that good balance and making sure that our employees know. That we see them as the experts and we will defer to their expert opinion. And also create an avenue for the community to weigh in on those things. And I think that's a really important balance and it all comes down to sort of relationships. Between, between partners and relationships within the city around different departments. And seeing those relationships from a place where they're supportive of the other departments. And that, I think, is reflected in a lot of things. Budget season is here upon us. And I think that's one place that I've seen. The conflict between departments really play out and how we foster those relationships. The other nine, ten months of the year so that when we get to budget season, it doesn't feel like a competition for funds kinds of things. Not just an example, but how we build those relationships. So for me, that's what success looks like.
I think, I think that's a good example because we were on a path to doing program-based budgeting using a very strict methodology. And one of the things that Katie and I cancel was that methodology. Because all it would have done is set up different departments to ferociously compete against each other. And we don't need that.
But just to sort of elaborate, I think a little bit on what we've all sort of said is this idea of, you know, so we've got the goals. That city goals, and like you say, it would be nice to have some, some ideas of what those were or tasks or projects, but. But like I said, it all just comes to something as simple, like you've already doing with the managers, city managers. But if we say we could start, okay, day one, we have zero units of affordable housing constructed. How many do we get constructed? How many were constructed in this year, literally? Same thing, we could say the turmoil at City Hall, how many lawsuits versus where we were, kind of literally. Yeah, how many staff, yeah, what staff would you retain, you know, longevity of staff, that kind of, but literally all the way down. And we're talking about, you know, like I said, you mentioned clearly of this kind of sustainability. It's like, okay, if a sub-goal is to say we want to decrease our energy usage, then what have we done tangibly? You know, what has this done? That, so that we, then we can kick, then we can go around and talk to road rears and say, hey, here's the goals and here are, here's data. So people will go, oh, well, okay, that's actually argued. But anyway, but that'd be.
So it's quantitative and time-measured.
Yeah, in time measure, so in this period, this happened. Like you said, city manager, we're getting that through city manager report saying, you know, this many, you know, this building permits, et cetera, et cetera. But like you say, how many jobs have we generated, right? It's gonna be a very important thing for all of us, right, you know?
Like what happened with D C R, we kept those jobs in the community.
Right.
That was important.
We were retained.
And quickly, like a miracle quickly, not like, not like, oh, you did it.
Failure was not an option.
Failure was not an option.
Yeah, but that also, I mean, that touches to, sure, we could say, you know, eighty or ninety jobs we can retain. But also that's customer service, you know, as Tim said in his notes.
Right.
Well, you guys, you guys did something. So that's real important, I think.
If it turns out that I am the successful candidate, I look forward to developing some granular targets.
Yeah. Right. Anything else for us, sir? Sir? Anybody else?
Thanks, folks.
Thank you. All right, thank you. We'll be in touch soon, as I understand. Do I need to lead you to another discussion?
We're supposed to report to Act of Public Safety at twelve fifty.
Okay, all right. We'll see you. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Are we ready to adjourn?
I think we are. We are just sporing. Thank you, Dara. Thank you to whoever might have been listening in.